Time is seven oh one. I'll call to order the city of Torrington planning and zoning commission meeting for March twentieth, twenty twenty four. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www dot Torrington C T dot org slash Zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in at one six four six five five eight eighty six fifty six, meeting ID seven ninety five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty five, passcode nine zero seven one four eight. Moving on to agenda item number two, attendance serving on the commission this evening. Diane Carroll, who will be seated this evening, Greg Peresino, Starley Arias is a remote, and he will be a seated member. Tom Tellman is remote this evening. Myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner, Jeremy Leifert. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval for A, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Time is seven oh two. Moving on to agenda item number four, public hearing beginning at seven P M. March twentieth, twenty twenty four, City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A special exception, twenty three dash zero six, applicant A J K L L C, location six thirty seven and six fifty nine Winston Road. Proposal renewal of existing earth excavation permit, section six point four. This public hearing is continued from February fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Serving on the commission this evening, seated is Diane Carroll, Greg Peresino, Starley Arias is also seated, Tom Tellman, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance is our city planner, Jeremy Leifert.
Want to kick this off?
So, so this one I don't read in.
Right.
But yeah, so we we left off with a few questions and additional information that we needed from the last meeting.
Is the applicant in attendance? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
A little surprised for you, Jeremy.
I know.
Representative AJK.
Dennis McMorro, D S M L L C, Beach Street in Goshen, right now.
Thank you. So where we left off last month, there were three kind of open questions we still had. One was the deep stormwater permitting process, and we did get some information from Wes that they're in the process of doing of doing the the deep application.
All the paperwork was filled out for it, was submitted. I think I sent you both a copy of that and the correspondence.
Yep. The second thing was bond estimates, and we did receive those from Zaharic.
Yep.
For 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 the amounts for the overall restoration and for the remaining work on the Elks property. And then the third issue, the the third consideration was the the waiver to increase the overall acreage of the of the site from twelve point five to thirteen point one acres, and we really needed some some engineering input on that in in terms of uh in terms of whether or not we could we could do any restoration anywhere on site to offset it or not.
Dennis, you want to kick it off?
Yes, for the record, Dennis McMorro. I was asked yesterday to come to the meeting, fortunately. Unfortunately, I hadn't come up to Connecticut for cataract surgery, so I had my first appointments last week, so I I was in North Carolina up until that point. But Wes called me yesterday and said that Jeremy needed us to to be together at the meeting, so I said sure.
Pull the mic up a little bit.
Is it not recording?
Oh, it is just.
Point it to your phone.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. The the map that you have on the screen right now, Jeremy, that's perfect.
Okay.
Let's see, I have control of the mouse.
Uh, you don't. It always it's only controlled from over here.
All right, I can do it. I I can do it by a description.
Yeah, if I I just tried to find the best sheet, so if you want me to change it, I can.
This this one is fine. At the very top of the sheet, that little moon shaped area, the the heavy dashed line is the active mine area, and then on the very top of the sheet, there's a crescent moon shape, right, right at the top by the graphic scale. And that's about point one, maybe a little bit more acres, and then on the far right, there's a rectangular shape, the far east of the the mine, that is probably about point four, point five acres. So those are the two corners of the upper floor of the mine that we need to get to. And and actually, Jeremy, if you could switch it to.
Why do you need to get to it?
What's that?
Why do you need to get to?
That's why I'm we that's where our the especially the one to the east. That's the one that has the the benches that need to be formed for the the floor, the upper floor. If you can go to sheet S one.
S one, okay. I was gonna say just bear with me for one second.
No problem.
I'm gonna have to go over there and do this, sorry.
But that that easterly corner is you'll see on the grading plan of of sheet S one, we we have to do every roughly every forty foot vertical, we have forty foot horizontal to create the the benches for the upper upper floor of the mine. And that area that's highlighted will show that that corner is is the the benching of the plan. So Jeremy, if we could window in to that easterly corner. So immediately the to the far right of the that the the property is odd shape, we tried to to follow along the plan, but that corner can the can the commission members see what we're talking about, that the easterly corner of the the mine? Jeremy, right there, you're perfect where you're moving the mouse. That area there is roughly point four, maybe point five acres, and that's the the back corner of of the mine that we're we're trying to create in there. This, the the upper floor is is active. It there's the blasting, there's crushing, there's sorting, and they're moving the material down to the the lower floor. In that lower floor, Jeremy, if you could just scroll up a little bit, the other way, I'm sorry. The lower floor is stockpile areas, and you can see those stockpiles in that lower floor. We've we've put other dashed lines around them, and that's the finished material that comes off of the upper floor. They drive it down. There's one access road over on the left side of of the map, and that is where trucks come in, they're loaded, and the sale of the product happens in that lower floor. So it's the way the the mine is operated that in the last few renewals is to have the the upper floor where we're crushing, processing, sorting, and then the lower floors where the the truckers come in and get their trucks loaded with whatever material they're gonna use and go out. There's, with the upper floor being created, the getting the benches, you have to work from the back out when you're finalizing the mine in there, and that's why we've requested the the waivers in there. The only thing that we could say is this thirteen point one, there's not going to be another request to go bigger. This is the full shape of the mine based on the grading plans that we have in that area. So Wes went out to the to the mine today and was looking around, trying to see if there was anything that we're not utilizing right now, and and we don't have a really anywhere that we're not using the space, that the two floors are are being fully utilized right now in there. But hopefully, we'll be working our way out of it with this two year renewal, and then it will be able to be stabilized.
So you have two spots, easterly and westerly, the additional area for the twenty twenty three renewal.
Yes.
You're showing.
Yes, that where Jeremy was moving the
Right.
the mouse, that's that's approximately, that's the larger of the two. It's going from twelve point five to thirteen point one, so it's point six acres.
Where's the other one?
The the crescent shape.
Yeah, okay.
The crescent shape at the very top of the sheet. And that's that's a very small area in there, and again, it's just.
Roughly how big is the one closest to Elks Pond?
These are the benches. To which one?
The one closest to Elks Pond, that area.
Yes, that's the that's where the crescent shaped one.
Yeah, how big is that?
Point one.
That's about point one, maybe one point one five acres. And that shape was, the shape on the mine was created because we kept a a minimum, the the dimension arrow that you're looking at to the closest corner of Elks Pond, that's a hundred and fifty feet. We never wanted to get any closer than a hundred and fifty feet to the pond, and the the depth of the blast is above the pond. We never brought the depth of the blast blasted area below. The pond's roughly three sixteen, and the lower floor is around three twenty of the mine. So we we did not go below the water elevation of of Elks Pond or within a hundred and fifty feet of it.
So the elevation of the you just talked about the elevation of the upper floor versus the lower floor?
No, the 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 lowest point of of the upper floor there, that contour line down on the west side is elevation three twenty.
Yep. And so the last time we spoke about this project, industry renewal rather, was there was a an anticipation or a projection that would be you have about two years more life within the quarry. What will the upper I imagine all the quarrying is being done on the upper floor.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So what do you anticipate the elevation to be when you're finished with this quarry?
If we go to, I'm sorry to make you move it again, Jeremy, if we go to sheet, it'll be S three, we'll have the two foot contours on there, and it's gonna range from the west at three twenty, and I believe it's like three twenty six or three twenty eight on the east. So you can see the contour lines moving to the east. If you could window in. Three, three twenty, three twenty to three twenty eight. Three twenty eight is in that area, the far east corner that we're talking about being roughly that point four acre expansion in there. So that's set up to be a a two percent slope on that floor, which is, you know, you don't want to be dead level, you want to have a certain amount of slope to to for water to move.
So how does that marry up to the lower floor? Then that marries up how to the lower floor, three hundred, so it's gonna drop another?
Well, then there's there's an access road that goes from that easterly side. It's you can see it, it's starting on the bottom of the sheet, it's traveling to the west. And Jeremy, if you go to sheet S two, we'll see. And scroll up a little bit, there's the at the top of the page, that's the the access drive coming down, that's a a fifty foot wide bench that's will be created with the blasting, and it's coming down at twelve percent grade. That's the the it goes to the west, and then it curves down to the south, and then a little to the east, and then you're at the lower floor of the mine, which will be elevation three twenty four or two twenty four to twenty eight on that floor. But to get to those, you need that length of access way to to connect the lower floor to the upper floor, and you have the the main access drive coming in to the lower floor. And then you start off on the the west side of the lower floor, and you you wrap around to the east to get up to the upper floor. And whatever is the future development of that, well, there'll be, there could be buildings or multiple buildings on the lower floor and on the upper floor, or one large one on each.
During the operation of the the quarry, is your anticipation that you'll quarry to demand, or are you gonna quarry and build a fair amount of inventory and finish the
We we're definitely stockpiling materials down below. It's not, it's not a crush and go type operation. It's a lot of volume.
Right.
So there's there's definitely a lot of stockpiled materials down below. So no, it's 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 cut and store, but it's every time you go there, it looks completely different. Because of the the volume that comes out and it's picking up.
Sometimes I drive by and there's big piles, and sometimes the pile.
Yeah, like right now, it's starting to pick up again. Yeah, yeah.
Any commissioners have any questions at this point?
All set.
Starley, got anything?
All set.
We'll go back to the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And that includes anyone remotely, please? Would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Take your time.
My name is Paula Jean Sikolski Pratt, and I live in the country living condominiums up at the very top, unit sixty six. And the reason why I am not for any of this, I've got a lot of damage that's been done to my basement, to my garage floor, not to mention Bay State blasting. When they blast, it's not at all the way that I was told it was gonna be, and I'm home all the time because I'm disabled. They're very good about calling me to let me know what time the blasting is gonna take place. So I sit and I wait, and then I'll get the blasting, and it's it's it completely shakes my building, the lady that lives next door to me. I don't know, I can't speak for my neighbor John here, but and also I have spoken to Ward, who's on the very end. So our building is right there at the top. And I love my home, and I feel fear towards what the future is going to be, having to do with all of those condominiums, because they're being shaken to the point where they're cracking, the foundations are cracking, and I just am not for this. Earlier in my life, I was involved with my father's construction company, Bakerville Lumber and Construction, so I know a little bit about this stuff. My father's construction company had a very small quarry, and I think it was just mostly topsoil and sand. I never had ever heard of anybody complaining about any blasting. There was a lady that didn't like the noise of the trucks. As for me, I can't sleep past a certain amount of time. When they start running the trucks and then running the crushers, I'm wide awake. And that has gotten worse through this past year. And the question that I have is, when was this put through when this construction company decided that they could do these things with the blasting and and everything else?
Jeremy, do you remember the original application?
Original application?
So two thousand nine, Wes? Maybe Wes can answer this better, eight or nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
And this is their ninth renewal?
It's every two years.
Yeah, every two years.
Twelve years.
Well, in my opinion, I don't think it's a good thing. Not for the buildings, not for anything to having to do with the company. I just don't feel it's safe, and that's my opinion, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mrs.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition or bring anything to the table? Please come
Good evening. My name's Dan Fisher. I live at two eighty nine Baylon Drive in Torrington. But tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Elks, as this year I'm their exalted roller. And I'm here to represent our members and board of directors' concerns. But please bear with me, I got some notes here. Our first concern is the safety and health of our members, our guests. We have a Rising Star camp up there during the summer for nine weeks, and those are special needs children, and then the general public that surrounds the operate the pit. So we we have some concerns about the blasting and the subsequent possible damages. And to begin, the dust, and we've had an incident of some fly rock into our property, I don't know, maybe two or three years ago, not sooner, and that was during the summer session of the camp, and that was reported by our camp counselors. And I recently got wind of that. So we have concerns about that. The kids are all over our property during the summer. They're right up against the the border, up against the woods. They set up tents down that area. They have their arts and crafts. They utilize the pond, they swim in the pond. So like I said, this the health and safety of human beings is our first and foremost concern. And then I'm I'd like to move on to blast days. We do get the seventy two hour notice, but I think we were we're requesting a twenty four hour notice, and then even an hour's notice before the actual blast time. And I'm speaking to this as a professional as well in the blasting business. I've been in it for thirty years, so I do have some experience when it comes to this. Now, prior to Bay State moving in there, Vet's Expulsives was in there, and they always gave a twenty four hour notice, and the day of the blast, they had a specific time that they would call the neighbors and let everyone know, hey, we're blasting at one o'clock today or one forty five. So everyone had time to prepare themselves and maybe move vehicles and things like that. But that was when we were way down towards Winston Road. So over the last several years, obviously, they've progressed further into the property. Which brings me to, we no longer have a seismograph placed on our dam, which was part of the agreement back in two thousand eleven with AJK.
What was that again?
Yeah, what was that?
Seismograph, seismic monitoring of our dam.
It's no longer there?
No, not to my knowledge. It hasn't been there since April of two thousand eighteen, when Bay State took over the blasting. Sorry, I gotta keep bending down here. So we request we request a seismograph. If this gets approved, we want a seismograph placed on our dam closest to the property line, and by law, they have to do it. And I don't know if this is possible, but another one of our things we'd like to see is during that nine week summer camp, that have them only blast on Fridays. Monday to Thursday is the camp from four to nine, from nine a nine A M. to four P M.
So you're asking for a one, one?
One blast a week on a Friday for nine weeks.
What are those dates or that you're looking at?
Usually, the camp will start the week after school's out, but the week before school's out, the camp counselors, who are college kids, are usually in there doing the setup, their training. I can get you the exact dates. I just don't have them with me tonight, because I don't think that's been final finalized yet. And the benefit of that is there there will be less people on the Elks property, and so less chance of, God forbid, anything happens of someone getting hurt or possibly killed. Plus, we also have members that go up there during the day, that we have hiking trails around the property, and some of them are border the AJK property. So with that being said, if they are gonna blast, if you are gonna allow this to go through and blasting to happen, we would like to have a representative from either the blasting company or AJK themselves to come up to our property on the blast day to make sure that the area is clear. And I think that's a very fair request, considering the proximity that the where the blasting has been recently. And going back to that agreement between the Elks and AJK back in two thousand eleven, there's some other things they're not doing. We haven't been getting new site maps and plans for each renewal, which was in the agreement for us to get. And we also have concerns about the encroachment areas that were discussed at the previous meeting here. Nothing's been done there, and when I look through all the records on the planning and zoning site at the city of Torrington, it looked like it looked like to me they had they were supposed to take care of that the last two years, the last permit. So I don't know if that's true or not, but that's the way I understood it. And also, I know fencing is not required, but I think for the safety of everybody, and especially like our camp kids, they, if you've ever, you've never been up there during camp, but some of them start to wander off. And if anyone ever, any of them ever wanders off up through the woods and out onto that property, you know, there's a chance they can go too far, and I don't know, fifty foot bench, maybe forty foot bench, I don't know what the bench height is, but a six foot fall can kill somebody, so that's another safety concern of ours. So I don't know if it can be enforced or required, but we'd like to see some type of barrier or fencing to to limit that type of occasion, if it ever happens.
With the seismograph lack of, so to speak, have you seen any changes in the dam or anything?
I'm getting to that.
Okay.
I'm I'm getting there. Like I said, I have a bunch of stuff here, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting. All right, I'll I'll jump right into the seismograph. We also believe, and this is part my professional opinion as well, that a third party should be doing the seismograph work, not the blasting company, because that's a big conflict of interest, especially if anything ever happened and something had to and it had to go to litigation. It should always be a third party. It's not a it's not a state law, but I know the blasting company I worked for, we always hired a third party because we're not geologists. I I can't set up a seismograph and then go into court and talk geology. I know blasting. I know a little geology, you know, the different types of rock and things like that, but. So we would like to have a third party seismograph paid for either by AJK or Bay State Blasting or whoever they're gonna be using this year. And another concern of ours is back in two thousand five, there was a report by Mr. Richard Hosley about the impact blasting relative to the neighbors and area, you know, businesses. I really believe that needs to be rewritten now, because that was way back at the beginning of the project, and since then, the blasts have increased over the last three years, the the blast sizes. And I pulled some information again off your your site, and there's about ten or twelve blast reports on there, and from two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty three, they've increased anywhere from as small as nine thousand pounds to a fifty thousand pound blast in a very urban area on a very small footprint. It just doesn't bode well. The larger the blasts, I'm gonna probably get into some technical stuff here that you're not gonna understand, but the larger the blast, pound wise, will can result in more pounds per delay being blasted. So say you say you put two hundred pounds in a hole, but you have three, two or three holes going off at a time. But you have three, two or three holes going off at a time. They may not go off next to each other, but in different areas. But that's considered, that would be considered four to six hundred pounds of explosives per delay. The higher the pounds per delay, generally, the higher your peak particle velocity, which is the vibration through the ground to the narrow structures. And the farther away that wavelength gets, you know, it slows down and the magnitude is even worse. So even though a lot of these readings I looked at were below one point oh, or even point, below point five. I, I believe, you know, when the condominium association or any other neighbors are complaining, I, you know, they're feeling it. So with that being said, again, if this renewal gets approved, we'd like to see some limitations on the blasting. And believe that a new blast plan or an analysis should be done by, again, another, a private third party. And I think this would benefit everybody. It'd benefit the Elks. It'd benefit all the neighbors and businesses in the area. And I gotta believe it would benefit AJK for working safely and, and, you know, ensuring that there's no harm to follow. And I want to get back to the dam. Back in two thousand and fourteen, our dam was rated in fair condition. Since then, it's been downgraded further. We had a study done in two thousand and nineteen and another one done in two thousand and twenty-three. And both those studies show that the dam has further deterioration, for lack of a better word.
Has it lost its fair rating?
Yes, it has lost its fair rating.
It went what?
It went significant, and now it's hazard. And we are working with the state to find a solution to get that back into compliance.
Is it explained why it's declining? Is there an actual, you know, an actual reason as to why?
The reasons, um, the reports just state the, some of, some of the stuff we were able to mitigate, like the trees, you know, I gotta remove within twenty-five feet of the dam, all the trees, all the brush. There were some burrow holes, animal burrow holes that we have to take care of. And there's, there is, there is a leak on the left side, if you're looking towards the dam, which is the closest side to AJK's property. And a, and where a lot of the blasting had occurred. So, I mean, without the seismograph work there, you know, I'll be honest. We can't prove it, but it just, to me, the correlation of the timeline seems to me that the blasting has had an adverse effect on the dam.
But there's no documentation stating that. Is that?
All I have is the engineering reports. I'm happy to turn them over. If you'd like to read through them.
Curious if they actually gave you a reason as to why it was downgraded? If it was, you know.
Apparently it's more than one reason.
Yeah, there's, there's several re, yeah. Does it particularly come out and name the blasting? No, it does not, if that's what you're asking.
As, as a blaster, what would you see as a, um, adequate blast size? Obviously, you blasted with more.
Yeah, well, what, what?
Getting more destruction, so to speak.
Right, right. I mean, what we, as a company, our company policy, we would survey the site, determine the type of rock it is. Um, then there's calculations you can make as far as bench heights, hole spacing, hole diameter. And when you get all those numbers together, you can figure out your table of distance and estimate what your vibration is gonna be so many feet away. So, you know, that's the process we would use. Now, I've blasted within feet of foundations and things like that. And without that process, we wouldn't be able to do it. And I know that's on, that's on a much minor scale, but sometimes we're blast, we're not even blasting a pound per hole. Because we don't want to damage anything. Now, in a quarry, obviously, it's a much larger scale. So control-wise, you can decrease the hole diameters, you can decrease the bench height or hole depth. You can move the spacings in. Cause you, you basically have to move the spacings in if you decrease the diameter of the holes. Because, you know, the less explosive you have, the less energy you're gonna have. So you got something that's, sorry. I think they're, they're on a ten-by-ten, four-inch hole. You know, so if they say they went down to a three and a half, they can probably, they probably have to go down to like an eight-by-eight. Which would reduce the amount of explosives. But, um,
This is the discussion that exactly points to what I brought up in the original presentation in our last meeting. The quarry is a dynamic environment, meaning the more you quarry, like you quarry at a low level at the beginning of the floor where they're, where they started quarrying, that's certainly a different place than when you quarry up on top. And you start to break down. And I'm concerned because we're, we're hearing about situations where you may be standing and a blast might go off and you might not feel anything. However, if you're in your house, you do feel something.
Correct.
It's really, um, an interesting, uh, situation, which is probably not a hundred percent predictable. Um, no matter how much geological surveying you do, it's probably not that predictable. Um, but what concerns me is, what I was trying to address last time was exactly the intensity of the blasts. I mean, that's something you choose to do. You design a blast to do a certain amount of excavating of, of the rock.
Correct.
So that can be adjusted to be less impactful, I would think.
Yes, it can, it can.
You may have to do more blasts.
Right, right.
Blast more often.
I'm not up here arguing about
Oh, no.
the blasting.
Not either.
Or against it. I, I, I understand blasting has to happen no matter where you are in some of these developments.
But there are ways you can do it.
There's ways you can, yes, work around, work around.
Make my point. You don't know when that seismograph was gone from the dam area.
I'm gonna, um, say April of two thousand and eighteen, that's when Vex, Vex explosives was notified. They were no longer doing the blasting. And also, we used to get the reports emailed to us as well.
And that stopped.
And, yes.
But it was part of your agreement.
Part of me?
It was part of your agreement.
Yes.
To have the seismic.
Yeah, I, I have the agreement here.
I'm familiar with it.
Okay. And as far as that point one or point one-five, I mean, that is right next to our property. And we would, we, we would definitely want some reassurance that nothing's gonna be, the blasts aren't gonna be directed towards it. And not knowing how they're gonna go about developing that area. So check my notes some more. Other than that, I, all I can say is, uh, right now, the Elks cannot support this permit renewal. And we, we even can't even, um, get into or accept an agreement with AJK like we have been in the past until some of these issues are either resolved or implemented.
Let me ask you this. If there was, I was taking notes as you were speaking, uh, Mr. Fisher. If there was blast notices one hour before third-party seismograph onsite with reports given to you, a representative there during the blast, Friday's only during the nine-week camp term. And get some information possibly on the blast sizes that are taking place. This is something I'll address with the applicant.
Okay.
You know, I just wanna know if that is.
Well, that would definitely help. That, that definitely helps.
Because it seems like some of this stuff anyway has been just fallen by the wayside through the years. I think it's been in place, so we're not really asking for anything new.
Right.
Per se.
No, I mean, the only thing we're asking new is now that they're so close to that us, you know, up to that fifty-foot buffer. We're, we're just really worried someone's gonna wander off, whether it be a kid or we, during the summer, we rent the pond on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. And I'm gonna be honest, we have Jack and Jill's, we have all kinds of different stuff. People are up there drinking. You know, so if some, you know, John Doe decides to go for a walk through the woods and is unaware and just keeps going.
I understand that the, um, the aspect of a fence. And just as a, um, housekeeping component, do you have any signs posted?
As far as?
In, in the wooded areas, so to speak, that, you know, do not enter
No.
danger, anything like that?
No, but that, if anyone should be putting up the signs, it should probably be
The burden shouldn't be.
AJK.
No, I'm just
But no.
curiosity.
No. And I welcome.
Cause in, in lieu of a fence, I don't, and again, I'm not familiar with the, the photography up there, you know, if a fence is even, you know, suitable to get installed. Maybe some notification.
I'm only speaking from experience because a couple of the ONG quarries that we blasted, they had put up fence in critical areas.
Okay.
To keep people out. And it, you know, it doesn't have to be a stockade fence. It doesn't have to be a chain link fence. It could be like a garden fence or, you know, something of that nature. You know, a wire fence. But I mean, we're more than, we'd be more than happy to put signs up on our side, but I also think they should be put up by AJK facing our, right, our property. You know, something. Because there's been instances across the country where what I just described has happened. And one was in Pro, Prospect at an ONG quarry where a dirt biker went off the face, so. I think that's all I got right now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm John Melroy, President Treasurer of the Country Living Condominium Association. I spoke with you at the last meeting and my main message was we seem to be developing cracks in foundations at the condos and that the, the blasting seemed to be getting more and more severe over the last few years. Of course, we don't have any proof except for the very last va, blast where we had one of our unit owners here who addressed you. And said he was there, he came down his basement, he had a big blast. We have, uh, pictures of that. Uh, my big, uh, concern right now is uh, with the blasting company mainly. I think that's where the problem lies. Uh, number one, for the condominium association, I want somebody from the blasting company to contact us, or at least, uh, I'd like, address, I like their insurance carrier to contact us. Uh, other than that, I try to remain neutral on whether they should have a permit or not. But I will add to this gentleman's comments that they were supposed, the blasting company was supposed to notify us three days before blast. They, they did it for one or two blasts and then it stopped happening. Uh, lately, I get a call an hour before the blast. Well, our purpose of being notified was so we could put a notice on the bulletin board telling the unit owners that there was gonna be a blast. So that didn't work out. And if you'll recall, I also mentioned to you that I stood, we have a seismograph in the front and back of Paula's unit. I was actually standing out there on the last blast with a blasting company employee when the blast went off. And you could have slept through it. It was a nut event. But yet, my neighbor came running out saying, what the hell just happened? And Dennis Royer, who was here last month at the meeting, let you know that it was no silent event in his unit. So, uh, I fully agree that we need to get somebody out there, a third party with seismographs to know what's going on. But a, as far as my interests are concerned, I want somebody out to start uh, looking at, at least settling with us on the last crack that appeared. And, you know, how do you prove all the other stuff happened that way? But, you know, we're spending a lot of money just fixing cracks because we get a crack, then the water starts coming in. So I mean, I mean, this stuff is just snowballing on us. And our condominium, it, it appears, and I'm no geologist, but it appears that our condos sit up on the side of the hill, almost right on the ledge of where they've been blasting for the last couple of years. So uh, that's all I got to say, but appreciate your
You, you did say. You did say the last time you were in front of us. If I got it right, you said that the condominiums that you're speaking about, the ones that were shaking quite a bit, and the one that got the crack in the floor. Said that they were built nearly right on top of ledge. Am I correct? When you, did you say that?
Uh, I did not, but Dennis Royer, the other fellow mentioned, he was a contractor. He was there when they were being built.
Okay.
And he said basically some of his basement floor has four feet of contract, the concrete, because it was all ledge. I, I know there is a lot of ledge up there and it, uh, you know, it appears like there's just solid rock from condos down to where they're blasting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition of this application that includes anyone on Zoom? Any commissioners have any comments?
Well, I'm good. Go ahead. Tom, is that you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay. Starly, how about you?
I'm all set as well.
Thank you, sir.
All right, well. Uh, basically, all these quarry things tend to be complex in, when they're presented because there's always some kind of an issue one way or another. This one in particular is annoying because there's been a lot of requests for things to be done. And for whatever reasons they are, they don't get done. Um, I don't believe in things falling by the wayside. That's just somebody not doing their job. Or just not wanting to do it. I mean, if there's a requirement for a seismograph to be placed on Yelkes Pond, that should never have been something that just somehow got lost. Um, I, I'm, uh, I'm not happy with how this has proceeded over the years. And I think now that we're on the upper floor and we're doing blasting, I think it's different than when you were on the lower floor blasting. Um, I don't know, you know, I'm no expert, but um, based on what everyone's saying and based on what has been done or not been done. I'm not, I'm not happy with what's going on right now. That's just my view of it. Um, I think that things can be done differently to make it work. But I think we're gonna have to do something different. I, I think it's time to do different, something different. And that means we have to work with, um, the applicant and try to satisfy the needs of the neighbors at the same time. So.
Wes, why don't you come back up with Dennis and let's kinda hash out some of this stuff?
Yeah, the applicant gets the last word anyway.
Right. All right, so I'm gonna just run by a couple of these comments that Mr. Fisher had brought forth. You know, I think being one of the predominant neighbors up there, and I think with a lot at stake up there. Just run it a by you. We'll go down the list again. Blast notices one hour before. Accept, acceptable?
No, it's not acceptable.
No, okay.
We were, yeah, again, we're, we just, we, after our last meeting here, too, we had a meeting with the blasting company about notifications and stuff like that. I've also talked to John here, one of the members of the condo association, agreeing to go up and meet him there when, when, when our, when our next shot goes off with the fire marshal, with a blasting company as well, to monitor the, you know, all the seismographs and, and then I, I, I don't, I've never read. To monitor the, you know, all the seismic graphs and, and then I, I, I don't, I've never read it through the thing on the Elks report. Conditions and stuff like that, so I, I can't really comment on that.
Well, let's go.
Yeah.
To that component. How about a third-party seismic graph back at the Elks Pond?
I'm not sure about that. I, you know, I know state has regulations that we have to follow. I, I mean, we're gonna try to do whatever we can.
You did it before.
What's that?
You did it before.
They have gone before, yeah.
There was a seismic graph there before, what we're asking.
There was, and I, and I can't speak to why it was removed or if it's.
I'm not asking whether it's, I'm only asking to put it back.
What's that?
I'm simply saying, put it back.
Yeah, I, we have no issues with that.
By a third party?
That I have to, I have to go back. I don't know. I, I don't have an answer for you for that tonight.
Well, I, I believe if it was gonna be third party, it should be wherever they're set up.
And I think, you know, as far as the seismic graph goes, in my opinion. They're not in the right place when it comes to the discrepancy between what you might feel. As a blast goes off near the condos and what you experience inside the building. So I don't think we're, we're putting them in the right place to get the right readings. So if someone should spend a little more time with, with that neighbor. That neighborhood, which is, involves quite a few people. And try to make sure that you've got them in the right places and that. You're addressing it.
What about blasting on Fridays, only doing their camp cycle?
That's gonna be tough. It's a whole summer.
How often do you typically blast?
I don't know the, you know, I don't know the volume that's proposed this year. Um, I mean, I know the volume of rock that's proposed. I don't ha- I don't have the blasting schedule yet. I know they're putting one together right now, currently.
You know typically how many times they blasted per week, per month?
I, it's, it's random. It, it all depends on, on what the, what the load requirements are for us. And the types of materials that we need, whether it's smaller aggregate, larger aggregate. So it, it does change quite a bit during the year and what's in demand, what's not in demand.
And again, I think one of the, the biggest components and, uh, Greg Parisino had brought it up also is the. The magnitude of the charges. I think that's, that's what's ringing loud and clear here that. Something may have changed somewhere along the way, or again, with the, the integrity of the, the rock. Different levels, it's. Reacting differently to the charges.
But then to say, then, then say only blast on Fridays if you're lowering charges and stuff like that, then we'll never be able to keep up with our operations.
Well, there must be a happy medium somewhere.
I, I have to look through the, the blasting logs. I'm, I'm on top of it now with them. I'm meeting with them probably beginning of the week. Um, and, you know, to go over all the concerns of the, of the citizens in the area. And to determine if there is, you know, different blasting patterns that we can do, or sizes, or loads.
Mr. Fisher outlined that when he read the log, it varied from 9,000 pounds to 50,000 pounds.
Yeah.
What exactly does that mean?
I don't know. I don't, I'm not an expert in blasting.
Can I ask him? Mr. Fisher, what does that exactly mean?
The fact it means is that the blasts have gone from 9,000 pounds to, up to 50,000 pounds.
So what does that pounds mean? What does that, is that the impact that you feel? The pounds of explosion? Right, so they don't all go off together at one time.
They're staggered.
Each hole in a blast is delayed. Uh, usually 25 milliseconds from hole to hole. But as the blasts get larger, longer, the row, you know, the rows get longer, the rows get deeper. You're gonna have double, triple. Amount of holes going on, you know, you can get two or three holes going off together. So if there's 200 pounds, if I throw 200 pounds. Say they're all gun barrel holes. And each hole takes 200 pounds. But if three of them are going off together, that's 600 pounds. Now that definitely affects. Your ground vibration. And that's all I was get- getting at. So there, there are ways. And I know it's a pain in the butt, and I know it's not cost-effective, because.
That's not our concern.
I've lived through it myself, so I totally understand.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, and then.
Alright, if you have any more, let me know. Alright, go ahead.
So the two additional spots that you want to, you're gonna be actually blasting those, correct?
Yes.
So. Last meeting, we, you came forth and the encroaching was still going on and we asked you to clearly mark. So both are though.
There's two, there's two areas on the plan that we clearly identified. They're gonna be, they're gonna be restored first thing in the spring. They're not, they're not very big areas at all. We thought, we thought when the guys were there, they cleaned them up. It's a very minimal area, but that is going to be addressed and Dennis had it on the plan as well.
And what's your position on fencing and/or signage?
Signage I don't have an issue with. Fencing's gonna be a really tricky thing through that area. Maybe we can, we could come up with some snow fencing. That pick the, either wood and metal ones to give it a, to give it a physical barrier. In that, in those, in a particular area, you know, with signage and fence of some type.
Where you put your signs on.
What's that?
I say it could also be where you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we're just, I think when we're discussing this, it's a, it's a visual barrier. It's not to.
Right.
If someone wants to jump over it, that's their own fault.
Trying to tell people, be careful and don't go any farther.
Well, again, the, I believe the, the requests from the public and the, the, uh. Adjacent neighbors and so forth are not unreasonable with the, the seismic graph requirements. And I believe, you know, for the overall integrity, it should be by a third party. That I believe should be at the condos and should be also be at Elk's Pond moving forward.
I just want, I have one other question.
Go ahead, Greg.
You know, I, wh- what happened in the past. And the curiosity for me is why it can't happen in the future. So I think Mr. Fisher mentioned that they used to get a three-day notice and then a one-hour notice. Am I right or wrong? No? What did you get?
With the new company, we've been getting 72-hour notice.
With the old company, how did you get?
Oh, the old company. Which I worked for. We designated an individual the day of to notify. The neighbors with an hour before blast time. So i- it is doable. I myself.
I have any reason why I wouldn't be doing it.
Right. I myself had made those phone calls to 20 to 30 people back in the day. When we were down on the lower floor.
Okay.
And up until then. I, I believe it was 24 hours notice that we would give, and then an hour's notice on the day of the blast.
And I think what was happening as well, we were getting a delay or not a delay, but it changed also for the condominium complex. Where they used to get a notice of three-day notice and now they're only getting a one-hour notice. And as one of the fellows said there, it, uh, it means they can't make, that one-hour notice doesn't give them time to put up a bulletin. To say to people, hey, look, something's gonna happen.
And that was duly noted in your last, in our last meeting as well. So that is being addressed.
Okay, well. You just mentioned that you couldn't give a one-hour notice when we asked you. So I either misunderstood you or you misunderstood us.
That I couldn't give a one-hour?
No, I asked you if you could do a one-hour notice before and you said no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I, I was confused. I thought you were talking about the three-day notice and then so, I didn't.
No, the question was, can you give adjacent neighbors a one-hour notice prior to the blast?
As well as the 72.
Yeah, you need to do more because like I said, they need time to tell other people.
Right, and I, I got where he was going with that.
So we have.
Just an hour when he'll never notice, notify anyone.
So we have, there's, there's sort of, just to take a step back for a sec, there's two different things going on here. We have, we have requirements that are in our regulations. And then things we're just requesting that you do to be a good neighbor. Our regulations say you have to provide a 72-hour notice. If anyone requests it, you have, you can't, you. Someone can request that you provide a 24-hour notice. If they make that request, you have to honor it. This, the one-hour thing's not in our regulations, but we're, we're asking. For some additional notice. As, as sort of a mediator here to get to, to, uh. To work with your neighbors, essentially. I just want to be sure that's on the record that we, we have our requirements and we're. We're, we're discussing, you know, kind of particular issues with the, with the neighboring properties.
Jeremy. For, for clarification, how far does the notification have to go? Like, is it a one-mile radius?
One, one-half mile. It's required within a one-half mile radius.
So the reason I'm asking is because I've, you know, I've received reports that. Uh, blasting can be felt up on Commercial Boulevard. So clearly something has changed over the years. It's just, it's just something to keep in mind that, you know, when you're doing your notifications. You, you should probably. Make the effort to, to go to. That one-mile radius, make sure that, you know, it's visible everywhere. I don't think that people up on Commercial Boulevard are gonna come down to the quarry and notice the sign that's, that's posted there.
Is there any limitations? In seismic graph readings right there? In the pit, in the quarry?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
To your knowledge, is there any requirements of seismic graph readings?
In the quarry itself or blasting?
Right.
I don't believe so.
No, no.
It's just for external, it's for external. Areas.
It's the areas outside the area because that's what's gonna get impacted. You want everything to crack where you're standing.
Yeah, speaking to that, the, yeah, it is outside the quarry. The Bureau of Mines sets a limit of 2.0.
Yeah, 2.0 is the limit, right?
Yeah, that's the, that's the standard.
Thank you. Yes, sir. One more. Name and address again.
John Melroy. Uh, when I talked with the fire marshal a couple of years ago. I was told that within a quarter of a mile, they must give you notice. Within a half mile, if up to a half mile, if you request, they must give you notice.
That could be a fire marshal regulation. This is through zone, through our zoning regulations.
Yeah, this is what I was told.
Yeah.
For just under a half.
Cause they did, the fire marshal does the permitting for the blast, the blasting permits.
Alright, so again, if we can hash out some of these other. Components here this evening. We can possibly make a decision this evening. If you don't think that's possible, you can make a determination on certain items. You can request an extension. And I can run through the list again.
Go through it again with me, Greg? Just real quick?
Alright.
Cause I, I, I probably can't, but.
Alright. Number one, signage slash some kind of fencing.
Okay.
Notification of the blasts, we're at 72 hours.
To our regulation.
To our regulations, 24 hours, they're requesting a one-hour blast notice.
That's a request.
A third-party seismic graph with reports at the condo complex and also Elk's Pond.
The dam.
Preferably with a representative at each location, whether it's the seismic graph. Person. And look into this Friday's only, during that nine-week camp. Component. And obviously these dates can be supplied by the Elks once they determine. Those specific dates. Another component is the blast sizes. Cause it sounds like they've been increasing over time. And it sounds like that may be one of the issues of some of the. Activity that people are seeing is because of the blast intensity.
We did, we did in our previous approvals, which I carried over to my recommendations for this one, we did have. We did have, um, six other identified days that the Elks could, could request you not to blast. Um, that's just six, six individual days. I, I carried that over in my recommendations, but I don't know if we should look at that further.
I think we have to get this right and, um. I, I. You know, I, I wanna see us come to an agreement where everybody's happy and we can move on. But we have to get this right and I don't wanna rush through this. I don't know where, whether you're prepared to agree or not agree, but. Personally, I would like to see an extension.
No, I can't agree to this tonight.
Yeah.
Alright, so you need to request an extension this evening.
Okay.
All, all you have to do, if, if you wanna request an extension, all you have to do is say, I request a 35-day extension on a piece of paper and sign it. My application and write down the address. So. There's only two things, I think. Size is. And whether, and whether, and blast frequency. Those are the only two questions we really need to get answered. The other stuff, I think we can. I think they're, I think they're in basic agreement.
Well, I, I think that.
Oh, yes.
You know, regarding the blast, the number of blasts, that.
Yeah, it's free.
Problem.
Frequency and sizes, yeah.
Frequency and sizes because, you know, as Mr. Fisher was talking about the camp and. He had a request that it be one and maybe that's not adequate, but maybe there's a negotiation between the two of them that can, that can satisfy them. And I think that. A little more personal contact with your neighbors, I think would be welcome.
This is the regular.
To see if you can't please them.
Thanks, Wes. So, yeah, I'll just read. So this is what I'll read. This is basically just carried through from previous approvals.
Yeah.
No blasting is to occur on Saturdays, Sundays, or any of the following holidays. Uh, New Year's, Good Friday, Memorial Day, July 4th, Labor Day, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Or on any six weekdays as designated by the Torrington Elks Club. Blasting is to occur between the hours of 9:30 AM and 4:30 PM. Applicants shall determine the schedule of school buses that pass through the area. No blasting is to occur either a half hour before or a half hour after the time school bus is scheduled to be in the area.
Yep.
That's just carried through from previous ones.
Alright, so you have enough information there to. Get some answers.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what we have written down, that's really just things we need.
I mean, you and I will be.
Is, is third, third party, where you can do a third-party seismic graph. And, and the frequency, the, the night, you know, the Fridays only, and i- if you can adjust the blast sizes, those three things. I, I think, I think he's in agreement on that.
Yeah.
About the fencing, you're, you're fine putting snow fencing and signage in?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, so that one's fine.
Alright, so we have a letter in the, this was just submitted for a request for extension for this public hearing.
Yeah, so, so then we're gonna, it's gonna be continued dates, April 17th?
Yep. The time is 8:09. I declare this public hearing continued to April 17th, 2024. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming, Dennis.
You're welcome. Happened to be in town. I don't think it'll be a repeat though.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number five, public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM, April 17th, 2024, City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrance, Connecticut. A proposal. Zoning Regulation Amendment. Applicant City of Torrance Board of Education and Torrance Ford Volunteer Fire Department. Proposal amend section 5.15 signed regulations, add digital signage on city-owned property. Alright, we're moving on to agenda item number six, old business. A discussion for shelter regulations. We're gonna move that to the end of our new business.
Uh, we just gotta get a motion to reorder the agenda.
I make the move, we order the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Alright, moving on to agenda item number six. New business, A, Site Plan 1491, applicant George T. Rouette, location 1703 East Main Street. Proposal new area for. East Main Street, proposal, new area for equipment storage. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, I've been here.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I'm here.
You're on Zoom?
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
George Tim Rouette, representing seventeen oh three East Main Street.
Thank you.
Let me just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Start by reading this.
Please.
Um, George T. Rouette has filed an application for property located at seventeen oh three East Main Street. Assessors map two four seven, block zero zero one, lot zero three five. For a site plan approval to one, remediate violations of commercial residential buffer requirements. And section five point eleven point five of the zoning regulations. Two, clearly identify landscaped areas on a site plan. And three, identify equipment display and storage areas on the property. These corrections are the result of zoning enforcement conducted on the property from June twenty-second to present. The property is owned by George G. Rouette, George T. Rouette and Aiden Rouette is. Is three point eight zero acres in area and is located in the LB local business zone. Previous site plan approvals included change in use for the current church on the property, site plan number nine twenty-six. In two thousand and nine and a ten thousand two hundred square foot retail and warehouse addition and site changes. Site plan number six forty-nine in two thousand and four. Both previous site plan approvals have expired and a new site plan approval, approval is required for this proposed site work. There are no proposed use changes for the property in this application. The review of this application is guided by the site plan review requirements of section eight point four of the zoning regulations. And landscaping and buffer requirements of section five point one one. A plan has been submitted titled compilation plan, prepared for George G. Rouette. Sixteen ninety-five to seventeen oh three East Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. By Timothy G. Wiley, Jr., land surveyor, Barhamstead, Connecticut, dated January twenty twenty-four, one sheet. Staff has met previously with the property owner and surveyor to discuss plans and vi- and violations prior to this meeting. Other items of note. One, there is some evidence in previous site plan approvals issued for the property. That equipment storage in the designated landscape buffer, landscaped and buffer areas are repetitive issue. I have recommended that all the landscaped islands in the parking lot that are missing curbing be curbed to discourage this practice. Your, uh, curbing is missing in the landscaped island directly in front of the building and has been added to the proposed site plan. Two, per enforcement history below from ZO Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. And historic files encroachment into the twenty-five foot residential buffer has been a repetitive issue on this property. Except for a few previously approved encroachments as noted on the plans, nothing may be stored or staged in the buffer area. Three, I would encourage the removal of the existing shelving units directly located in the buffer along the eastern property boundary. CGS eight dash thirteen A prevents the city from ordering the removal of these units. Since they are considered a structure in place for more than three years, but they may not be utilized for storage, making their presence obsolete. It constitute a zoning violation to use these units for storage in the buffer area and will be enforced. Four, all remaining equipment storage in the buffer area shall be removed and identifi- and, and the identified buffer. Along the eastern side of the property currently in asphalt shall be restored with grass and, or other landscaping. Five, all trees identified on the plan or otherwise within the buffer area. That are removed shall be replaced with trees of no less than two point five inch caliper as required in the regulations. Six, the applicant has identified a temporary pallet storage area on the plans within the buffer area. These pallets, the pallets must be relocated to a suitable area. Stored inside a building or removed from the property within sixty days of this approval. If relocated on the property, the applicant shall notify the city planner of the new compliant location for this application file. Other staff comments. Economic Development Director, due to a current city vacancy in the position, this applicant, application was not referred to the Economic Development Office. Assistant Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the city planner dated February twenty-second. Twenty twenty-four, offered the following comments on the plans. Enforcement history, June first, twenty twenty-two, the Land Use Office received a complaint from a neighbor behind seventeen oh three East Main Street. About clearing of vegetation in the twenty-five foot residential buffer and increased light trespass due to this removal. June twentieth, twenty-second, the property owner was sent a notice of violation identifying unpermitted structures, light trespass. Material storage in the buffer and equipment vehicles parked in the Connecticut DOT right of way along East Main Street. October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, lighting, right of way, display and unpermitted structure issues were made compliant. January third, twenty twenty-three, second notice of violation sent regarding the storage of equipment in the residential buffer. February one, twenty twenty-three, met with Mr. Rouette and his attorney onsite to discuss options. It was agreed that Mr. Rouette would hire an engineer slash surveyor and submit a site plan modification application. Given the changes to the site since the last plan was approved. August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, site plan modification application was not submitted despite repeated a quest, request from the Land Use Office. A cease and desist order was issued requiring all material storage within the twenty-five foot buffer be removed. And a site plan modification application be submitted. October second, twenty twenty-three, all equipment was relocated outside of the buffer other than pallet storage. Which Mr. Rouette wanted to request in his site plan modification application. The Land Use Office allowed him to continue this limited use of the buffer until the site plan modification was approved. February one, twenty twenty-four, an email was sent to Mr. Rouette stating that, stating if a site plan modification application was not submitted. By February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, a citation would be set with fines accruing at one hundred and fifty dollars a day. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or water courses on or in the vicinity of the subject property. That would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands, uh, wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping. No additional landscaping is required for the East Main Street frontage. However, continued equipment, equipment display in the DOT right of way, partially on the neighboring property shall cease. Material storage behind building B along the retain, retaining wall between. And along the retaining wall between buildings A and B are within the twenty-five foot residential buffer and shall be removed. The existing shelving units in the buffer were issued an after the fact zoning permit because they were in place for over three years. As required by CGS section eight thirteen A. However, the Land Use Office has determined that they cannot be used to store equipment. As the units were installed after the last site plan was approved in two thousand and four. Proposed pallet storage in the buffer is also prohibited by section five point fifteen point five A. As it was not specified in the prior, prior approval. Screening is required by section five eleven five of the regulation. However, existing vegetation may be used to satisfy this requirement at the commission's discretion. Lighting, existing lighting is compliant with section five point one seven of Torrington zoning code. For future lighting, we encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. Existing signage is compliant with section five point five of, five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this op- application was not referred to the ARC for comment. Connecticut DOT, Rob Fernandez, Transportor, Transportation District Services Agent Two with Connecticut DOT. In an email to the city planner dated February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, offered the following comments. Connecticut DOT District Services does not have any comment at this point with the plans as presented. Should work extend into the right of way and or additional parking spaces be constructed, proposed. Meeting or exceeding two hundred spaces, an encroachment permit application will be required. With a set of plans detailing all work within the right of way and overall site plan for a review. WPCA, the Fire Marshal's Office, Police Traffic Division and Engineering. Responded to the city planner and indicated that they have no comments on this application. No comments were received on the proposed site plan modification from the building official or Torrington Area Health District. clusion. For review and comment by city staff, I recommend approval of site plan application number fourteen ninety-one. To remediate violations of reg- residential buffer requirements in section five eleven five of the zoning regulations. And to identify equipment storage areas and landscape areas on a site, on si- on a site plan. Or seventeen oh three East Main Street, assessors map two forty-seven, block zero zero one, lot zero three five. With the appro- with the following approval conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall install additional curbing as indicated on the plans. Or provide an acceptable bond amount to the city planner within sixty days of this approval. Two, the applicant shall remove any and all equipment or other storage. From within the landscaped areas and the twenty-five foot residential buffer areas. Within sixty days of this approval and notify the city planner of any new zoning compliant exterior storage locations. Three, except as necessary to protect and maintain buildings or safety, the buffer areas shall remain in a natural state. This includes cessation of any mowing vehicle access or vegetation removal, except as necessary for routine building maintenance access. Four, the two handicap accessible parking spaces near building A and building B shall be marked and signs installed as indicated on the plans. Five, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner. Outlined in his February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four email to the city planner. And correct all outstanding identified violations within sixty days of this approval. Six, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final site plan sheet, including the surveyor's stamp and chairman's signature box. B, one Mylar copy of the full approved final site plan sheet for filing with the city clerk. In accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chair and ser- chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, surveyor's seal and living stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman. Uh, seven, the cease and desist order issued by Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. On August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, shall remain in effect until the property is brought into full compliance with the conditions of this approval.
Thank you. Any commissioners, have any questions or comments? Does the applicant have anything else to add?
Yeah, can someone on the board tell me when my previous site plan expired?
Hold on one second. Um, so. Site plan number nine twenty-six, uh, would have expired in twenty fourteen. And site plan six forty-nine, um, I believe was given an extension by statute, but still would have expired in twenty eighteen.
Where is that listed, the expiration dates? Like, where can I find that information? Is that in the city regulations or the zoning regulations?
Yeah, state statutes, uh, section eight dash two. Or thereabouts, uh, it's in, in that area of the, of the state statute.
Okay. Um, I have some issues with the. Curbing requests by the building. That's going in there. That's gonna catch all the runoff from that building through the driveway and not allow the water to access that grass. We're constantly mowing that. Been that way for thirty years, never had an issue. I'd like to not have any curbing required there. Well, that area, that grass there is all below grade from the building, so all the rain runoff comes down there. I have to put curbing in there. Gonna be an issue for the runoff and then in the winter time, all it's gonna do is freeze and create puddles and couldn't make a mess for people slipping. Where now the water runs right onto the grass and is absorbed.
Wha- what do you think about that though, Jeremy? I mean, it's a non, you know, an impervious surface is. It, so now it's pervious, which is actually a benefit, isn't it?
Uh, well, so, so it's not really, it's not changing the location. It's, it's putting, it's just putting a curb.
No, I know that, but, but it does prevent the activity to take place. In other words, the water can't run in from an impervious surface to a pervious.
Yeah, so we can do, we can do, um, spacing. It's a typical. Practice to just have, have spacing in the, in the curbing.
Okay.
Without removing the entire curb.
What kind, what kind of spacing?
It's, they're just gaps in the curb to allow, to allow stormwater through.
Like five inch gaps?
Uh, you know, there could be five inches, could be a foot. I've used, you know, the ones I've seen have been a foot, foot and a half.
Okay.
To allow stormwater through. That, that would have to be. Proposed by, you know, on a, on an updated drawing.
Is that something the applicant has to?
We don't want, I don't, I don't think we want to allow it to be totally eliminated.
No, but is that something that you, would the applicant has to revise?
Yeah, I mean, we could do a mi- we can do a minor revision to this, yeah.
Did you hear that outcome?
Yeah, I hear it. I think it's a little, little stringent, but. So I'm forced to do it, I'm forced to do it. I don't agree with it. It makes more of a hassle.
We require curbing around every landscaped island in every parking lot and.
You know, the islands that come up the driveway, like there was curbing around there and I think that's where your main issue was. You know, we didn't destroy that curbing. Unfortunately, the use of that property has changed over the years and there's a lot of tractor trails that come in there now. And, and if you've been on the road, you see the caliber of CDL drivers, they just drive right over the curb. They don't care. They're not my employees. They're not even going to my business. So I can't catch them. They come in all night to the hour. They're actually going next door to the tenant. If I replace the curbs, they could be out in a week. Uh, do you guys have any suggestions to on those islands where the curbing has been run over and destroyed? What I could put in there that would hold up to tractor trailers weighing eighty thousand pounds?
Put cameras in and catch them.
Make the tractor trailer drivers pay for it.
I watch them.
They gotta learn how to drive.
Well, I'm not the DMV. I can't tell them how to drive. I've had them even take down the guy wire on the telephone poles. They just drive off. They come in at three o'clock in the morning. They come in at eight o'clock at night. And they come in during business hours. I can't babysit. Again, if you have any suggestions on the type of curbing that can maybe hand, stand up to that. That would be a, a lot of thing. That would help delineate those islands there you're looking for.
Asphalt, concrete.
Well, yeah.
Rubber curb stops lined up.
Multiple curbs.
Multiple curbs.
Yeah. I mean.
These are round, the round islands on the, the site plan. You see those on the. You'll come, if you're come up the driveway on the right side, those round islands, that's where they're destroyed from the trucks. So. Um, in that area. What would you like to see go back in there?
Well, if you have islands, it needs curbing.
Yep, and I'm not arguing that fact. I'm just asking if you guys have any suggestions on what can go in there that could hold up? Cause again, I can. Pay that, you know, a couple thousand dollars, have a curb fixed tomorrow, but. In a week, they're all destroyed again and, uh, it's just not a practical practice. Well, in your experience, does anybody have any suggestions? Concrete might work. I don't know how it'll hold up long term, but I think it's more durable than. Asphalt.
I can show you, I mean, I can give you, I could send you some plan examples of where they, where they proposed multiple curbs when they were. Concerned that trucks trying to turn into say a gas station or something, we're gonna, we're gonna jump on the curb. Um, I can, I can send you that.
And they're made to be driven over. It's just.
You're, I mean, you're not supposed to do it routinely, but in case, you know, a, a truck.
Clearly, but I can't control the drivers, you know, they, they're trying to turn around and get in and out of there. It's just a tight, tight turn. There's not a lot of room there.
Is that what we did at the Cumberland Farms, that kind of?
Yeah, cause, cause there, there was, most trucks could make the turn, but there was certain long trucks that, that were gonna. The, the one on, you talking about the one on Midgeon?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are multiple curves.
Also East Main, because they had to turn in too.
Yep. So, so the one on, on Midgeon that they're finishing up with has multiple curves on both sides.
Right.
Yeah.
I would say send them the, the drawings of that and that would be the way to go.
Yeah. That's probably gonna be your best bet to not get them, not get them beat up along that side.
What about the, um, the curbing route for up by the grass?
I mean, I think, I, I, you know, my personal feeling is, is, I, I can, again, I can send you examples of, of, of curb, of. I, I, you know, my personal feeling is, is, I, I can, again, I can send you examples of of, of curb, of spaced curbs. That, you know, you just, you, you. I mean, you'd have to figure out where the water is kind of the worst, but just leave gaps in the curb, um, I could send you pictures of that stuff.
I'm, I'm looking to not put any delineation there other than the grass to the permeable, you know, why wouldn't that be an option? It's not an island, it's a pretty large area. And equipment is parked in front of it, so that's kind of delineating the grass from the permeable.
Well, you, you were saying that it's part of our regulation.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to, we have to curb the, the, the.
The islands.
The islands, right, it's just one large island.
So we don't have leeway on that, basically, is what it amounts to, our regulations require that. It be curbed. And it's so a modification or suggestion is to space the curbing. So that you don't have the water issue. I mean, clearly, that's the main issue, I think. You don't want water being backed up and then being.
And being able to access that to mow, you know, I have little lawn tractors, like if a customer brings a tractor and a little lawn tractor, we have to be able to get in there and mow with it. And keep the grass down and also test their, their mower. That's one of the ways we mow that grass is using those. If I have curbing there, I can't get through it.
Do we have a limit on how high the curbing has to be?
I don't think so, not in our regs anyway.
No.
So they can be. Short curbs. An inch tall, half inch, twenty inches, what are we talking here?
Why don't, why don't you try to work out what an acceptable curb?
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be curb in one form or the other, we can, we can, you know, leave some gaps for. Uh, we can, we can work out something and get you access for, uh, how wide is your mower, you're just going up there with a standard riding mower or something, right?
They can be anywhere from sixty to seventy-two and down.
I mean. It's not a very big area, you don't need a big mower in there. So we can.
If a customer has a mower that's seventy-two inches and we're mowing with it. Why wouldn't we mow that?
Right. Because you gotta make it work, if you gotta use a smaller mower, and that's what you gotta do.
He's just riding them in there. You wanna check a motor, you're using that for. A testing area, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
I think work with Jeremy, come up with a. A suitable. Resolve to the curb. Size, make. Spacing. But it's required.
Broken up curb that spaced out, and then there's an area where it's. Uh, got a six or seven foot opening at least.
Sure, probably, we could probably work a ra- a ramp or something out in, in one spot.
So that's okay.
Get together with Jeremy and work it out.
Well, I'm trying to work it out right now, that's what we're here for, right?
Well, yeah, but it has to be done on a site, it has to be on a site plan.
We, we, we just reviewed, yeah, that's, the commission doesn't, doesn't do your, you know, make your plans for you, they, you, you propose things to us and, and we review it.
Is this gonna be in front of board again, or is this gonna be considered a minor modification?
No, it's a minor.
Minor modification.
That's what this was.
Be, it's gotta be changed on the plan because the plan gets filed.
Hmm.
Hard copies and then a Mylar.
We're, we're only talking, we're only talking the curbs on the, on, in a couple of spots here, we can, we can work out whatever we need to work out.
Hmm, I just don't wanna have to come to board for what at best is a minor site fan modification like I'm doing right now. That's all.
Well, we need to see it on a plan, so you and Jeremy can determine that.
Essentially, uh. We're. We're looking at a, a, a motion for an approval with. Um. With the condi- with, in addition to whatever we have there, a condition that we, that we work out any modifications for.
For the curbing.
For curbing.
That area.
And I got a, another. Reasonably crest, so, you know, it's not. Asked for, it's not approved in one side here, but that temporary pallet storage, is there. Any way to get that? In that area approved on the plan, it's.
It can't be in the buffer. That's the whole point of the buffer, it can't be in the buffer.
Hmm, now, I'm not allowed to maintain mow the grass in the buffer, I have to let that grow up.
So you're tight against the buffer, so we want to allow you to maintain access to the building, but it, um, um, just enough to access the building. You don't need to mow the entire, that's the point, you don't need to mow the entire twenty-five feet behind the building.
In order to access my building. And maintain it, you know, that was part of the issue, I had those trees falling on my building, damaging it.
Yeah, you don't need twenty-five feet to access your building.
Yeah.
For, for any kind of maintenance or, you know.
What am I allowed to mow back behind the building? What, what path is gonna be acceptable to you?
I don't, I don't know.
I, I, I don't, the, the. Uh, we never restricted the, what a buffer looks like. And if you wanna have a pretty buffer. The, the only purpose of the buffer is, it's just, it's kind of a setback for, for the building.
Yeah, it's just, and, well, the, part of it's screening.
Yeah, screening.
Well, so, when we, when we deal with grass buffers, they're generally in the front of the property. On the sides and in the back, they're generally a screening buffer.
Right, but there is screening there.
Right.
So if, whatever lawn is there can be cut, what there is.
Well, that's, that's, that's exactly my point, the building's practically right on the twenty-five foot buffer, so you don't need to clear the whole twenty-five foot buffer.
Need to, but he wants to.
Well, no, because.
I was told by Nate that I had the right to maintain that.
Yeah, whatever's grass, not, not the bushes and the trees and. The stuff like that.
Right, understood, right, that's. But we need to maintain the vegetative buffer.
Vegetative buffer.
Right, and that was my point, you just. Can't clear out the entire buffer.
So there's trees on the buffer that are marked there. On the, behind the building.
Yep.
The idea is, the idea is, it's, the idea for the rear of the building is it's a screen to your neighbor.
Correct.
But he doesn't see your big building and all he sees is your big building. So that's the purpose of the screen.
Well, and that's the purpose of those trees that are listed back there.
It's the reason for the trees.
Yes, so I'm not mowing the trees, I wanna be able to mow the grass to maintain that, and so am I.
Is that? The point is that line, that line should fill, there's, there's gaps in those trees, that line should fill in. Is, is the only, the point, the point I'm getting to.
Okay. So do I need to put trees in there? Or?
We just, uh, in my recommendations, I said just allow it to naturally vegetate.
Right, just let it grow.
So that area back there at the twenty-five foot buffer, there's probably. I'm gonna say. Twelve to fifteen feet of flat area, and then it's steep bank. So. I'm just asking to be able to mow that grass on the flat, and the rest is gonna. Take over. And that's gonna be the, the buffer for the neighbors back there.
Hmm.
Does that make sense?
It does, makes sense.
Okay. On the side of the building. Sorry, on the. Buffer. On the right side of the map. Am I allowed to maintain that and mow that, the grass? And I specifically asked the question because I'm. So if it's grass, I can mow it, just there's gotta be the, the buffers.
It's commercial on that side, isn't it?
No. That's residential. There is. Probably forty, fifty foot tall tree, foot tall trees running up that whole side of the property, and I do wanna note. That that property, I was never complained. Never had an issue. With that area and the way we were using it. It's on the neighbor behind. I'm just asking for permission to mow that grass, and I'm asking because one of my manufacturers, I have my building inspected. For appearances. And that is specifically one of the areas that they didn't like. Now, and per. Landscape requirement, it's there to make an attractive harmonious environment. So trimmed grass would look better than brush. And that is about a nine foot average wall sitting over there too.
Yep.
I didn't see that as an issue, but. Probably screened already.
Say any issue with that mowing?
No.
Okay.
Just, uh, the, the, the equipment storage in the rear buffer was, were the main issues here, so.
Right, and as of, you know, you said everything's in line there, you know, I've, everything's out of that buffer. And. Per the letter that I received back in. June of twenty-two, I had all but one of those. Issues resolved very timely. Now, I'm not sure why that, this letter is being recommended to cease and desist in effect when I've taken care of all those things.
Well, I think the key is, is to have Nate go out there and just verify that everything has been moved and it's out of the buffers.
Part of it was pallet, the pallet relocation and the fixing of the curbs.
And the, the pallets have been out there, I, I understand the curbs. Um. The mowing, I think we're all in agreeance that I'm allowed to mow the grass. In that buffer to make it look nice.
Hmm.
Correct.
Okay.
So, uh, you see where my cursor is here with this angle, this, this thing's kinda angled down here? This, this was on a previous plan, so you can be within the buffer.
No, I do not see where you're.
Uh, you see where this catch basin is right here? You got.
I'm only seeing you guys on this Zoom, so, catch basin.
See the plan?
Jeremy, you're not sharing.
Hang on.
Uh, well, we're all seeing it here, I don't know what's going on on your end. But I have the plan, I'm sharing the plan on the screen, do you have another window over top of what you're looking at or something?
I mean, I have the plan right in front of me, where do you want me to look?
Uh, Jer- Jeremy.
The right side of the plan where it says catch basin, and to the right it says existing spruce rose.
Okay, yeah.
See where there, there's like an, you have it like an angled curb near that where that catch base is.
Uh huh, yeah.
So that, so that angle there, that, that was approved on a previous plan, so you can be within the buffer on that side.
Okay, but I'm not allowed to use that area, or can I?
Yeah, up to, up to the, there's a. Um. You know, there's basically a cross line there where this, where there's like a light post.
Hmm.
Gotta be out of the buffer, uh, above that.
Yeah, so it's, that's paved and approved previous, but we can't use it, just to be clear.
You, you can, yes, outs- outside of where the, where the curb line is already.
Or that, that solid curb line, as long as you're outside the solid curb line, you can still use it.
That is with inside, that is inside of the twenty-five foot buffer though, in that area.
It was, it was approved, it was approved previously, it's on, it's on a previous plan, so.
Okay, so.
Basically about.
No, I had to move everything out of that area.
Oh my God.
What's that?
Sorry?
I don't know, somebody I think is a little upset because we're going a little long here. On this particular plan, so someone's probably getting a little bit.
So I am allowed to use that paved area. Inside the buffer. Down the previous plan.
To, to, just to, to the point of, about where your shelving units were, anything above that has to be out of the buffer.
Okay, alright.
Or where that dash line is.
Yeah, wherever that dash line is, just. Just, uh.
Stop there.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright.
I just wanted to bring that point up because I saw it on a previous plan.
On the, um. Just wanna clarify on. In the conclusion section of. Number. Where is it here? It, it mentions. That there's asphalt and it has to be put back to grass, but. I don't have any asphalt in that area. Um, sorry, page number two. Item number four. There's along the eastern, easterly side of the property. There's, an asphalt shall be restored with grass and landscaping. Where's that referring to? Page two, item number four.
I might, I honestly have to look back in my notes, uh, is that, that, um. Is that island there? The, the island that's in the buffer there?
Is it supposed to be restored with grass or other landscaping?
Yeah.
There's grass in that island there, um, that hasn't changed. You know, that's current, for the drawing.
You don't have, uh, oh, uh, you know what, I think I'm, I think I'm. It's, it's north of, of that angle line that I was pointing out to you, anything that's in, uh. You have like a, a parking space or two in there, and that, that all should be in grass.
Okay.
About where, approximately where your shelving units are.
Okay, so that. Is all permeable and that's gonna be grass for you for summer times here.
Okay.
So there won't be an issue there then, does that make sense?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. I just didn't wanna think that there's asphalt in there, and that's, it's a permeable surface and it'll be grass.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, I think that's all of my concerns at the moment.
Thank you.
So I need to just change some minor things in the site plan and resubmit, is that correct?
Yeah, and they, uh, I, if you're, if. You're gonna have Tim do it, he can talk to me, we don't need the full, this full plan, we just need the area, you know, we kinda need a zoomed in area of, of what he's working on. I mean, you could, you could do it, you could just. Fix this entire plan and send it to me, but. I'd rather just see the areas that, that we're doing a minor modification for.
Uh, the only thing that's gonna change on here would just be the pallet door chest come off. Other than that, I'm not changing anything, I'm just.
Yep.
Mowing grass.
Alright.
Well, and your curbing detail.
Curbing detail.
Yes, we already covered that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Sound good. Good.
Yep. Alright, any other? Commissioners have any questions? Alright.
Make a motion to approve site plan fourteen ninety-one, applicant George Rouette, location seventeen zero three East Main Street. Proposal new area for equipment storage. With the following approval conditions and recommendations, number one. The applicant shall install additional curbing as indicated on the plans or provide an acceptable bond amount to the city planner within sixty days of this approval. Number two, the applicant shall remove any and all equipment or other storage from within the landscaped areas and the twenty-five foot residential buffer areas. Within sixty days of this approval. And notify the city planner of any new zoning. Comply, compliant exterior. Storage locations. Number three, except as necessary to protect and maintain buildings or safety. The buffer area shall remain in a natural state. This includes cessation of any mowing, vehicle access or vegetation removal, except as necessary for routine building maintenance access. Number four, the two handicapped accessible parking spaces near building A. And building B shall be marked and signs installed as indicated on the plans. Number five, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus. Assistant Planner outlined in his February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four email. To the city planner and correct all outstanding identified. Violations within sixty days of this approval.
Back, uh, I second the motion.
I'm not done yet.
Nope, go ahead.
Number six.
Don't take a breath.
In accordance with section eight point four point three. And eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the fully approved final site plan sheet. Including surveyor stamp and chairman's signature box. B, one Mylar copy of the fully approved final site plan sheet for filing. With the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheets shall bear a chairman's signature box. A copy of the approval letter from the commission. A surveyor's seal and live ink. Seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar she- sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman. Seven, the cease and desist order issued by assistant planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. On August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three shall remain in effect. Until the property is brought into full compliance with the convention, conditions of this approval. Number eight, work out modifications per curbing with city planner.
Alright, I second it.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving on to item number six, B, special exception twenty-four dash zero one in site plan fourteen ninety-four, applicant AJ Resources LLC. Location twenty-two eighty-five Winston Road, assessor map two-two-four, map zero zero one, lot zero zero seven. Proposal earth excavation, section six point four, we need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving on to item number six, C, re-subdivision, applicant. Clutiam Mizvani. HPVM Motel LLC. Location three sixty-seven and three ninety-one to three ninety-five Winston Road. Proposal is for two lot re-subdivision, we need to set a public hearing date, the suggested date is April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved, okay. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving on to agenda, item number six, D, site plan fourteen ninety-three. Applicant Torrington Historical Society, location John Brown Road, assessor map two thirteen, block zero-zero-three, lot zero-ten. Proposal parking lot for six cars for public access to John Brown Birthplace Trails. Is anyone in a, any applicants in attendance?
Rest of the room.
Come on up.
Hey.
Have a party. Just your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Mark Lenahan, twenty-three thirty-five Newfield Road.
Thank you, sir.
And these people are with me. That's my support.
Alright, and you're looking for, uh, just get some parking for the public access to the, uh, to the trails, correct?
Right.
Yeah, this, um, this was looked at by the city engineer, um, he really just only had questions on the width of the paved apron and, um, drainage pipe to go under, to go underneath
Mm hmm.
the access. Um, but I can just dive in if you want me to.
Please.
Alright.
At the, uh, I would, one addition that's not on this particular, uh, drawing is underneath the paved apron, uh, all is requiring a fifteen inch, uh, pipe, uh, culvert, so.
Yep.
We understand that and that will be done.
Alright, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll mention that in here. Um, the Torrington Historical Society has filed an application for property located at John Brown Road, assessors map two-one-three, block zero-zero-three, lot zero-one-zero, for a site plan approval to add a gravel parking lot of approximately fifty-four feet by forty-three feet. The parking lot would contain six parking spaces for the purpose of trail access to the trails on the John Brown Birthplace property. The property is owned by Torrington Historical Society, Inc., is fifty point seven acres in area and is located in the RWP watershed protection zone. The property contains the remaining foundation of the John Brown, Brown Birthplace home and a network of hiking, walking trails on the property. There are no proposed use changes for the property in this application. A new site plan approval is required for this proposed site work. There are no previous site plan applications on file for this property. A hand-drawn plan has been submitted titled Proposed Site Plan, Six Space Gravel Parking Lot, John Brown Birthplace, scale one to sixteen equals one, one sixteen equals one foot. Undated, unsigned, submitted with the application packet dated two twenty-seven, twenty-four, one sheet. Staff has previously met with the Torrington Historical Society staff to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note, uh, one, due to the nature and location of this property, I recommend a waiver of an engineered site plan for this application as allowed by zoning regulations, section eight point four point four. The applicants have submitted a hand-drawn sketch of the dimensions of the parking lot and the individual spaces and travel lanes. Two, the minimum width of the vehicle travel lanes of twenty-four feet and the entry drive width of twenty-two feet have been addressed on the hand-sketched plan. Other staff comments, Economic Development Director, due to a current city vacancy in this position, this application was not referred to the Economic Development Office. Assistant Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the city planner dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, no wetlands approvals are required for this application. This constitutes a favorable report to the commission. Landscaping, no additional landscaping is required for this application. Lighting, no lighting is proposed for this application. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. Applicants shall follow up with the land use office to confirm any new proposed signage is permitted and compliant with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, the application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, the application was not referred to the ARC for comment. City Engineer, Paul Hudson's City Engineer, in an email to the city planner dated February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, offered the following comments on this application. One, a fifteen inch HDPE culvert will be required under the new driveway apron, located approximately six feet from the edge of the existing road. The existing roadside ditch shall be excavated and rooted into and out of the new pipe. Two, site stopping distance has been verified adequate in both directions. No comments were received on this proposed site plan modification from the building official, Torrington Area Health District, WPCA, Police Traffic Division, or Fire Marshal's Office. Conclusion, per review and comment by city staff, I recommend approval of site plan application number fourteen ninety-three to construct a gravel parking lot on property located at John Brown Road, assessors map two thirteen, block zero-zero-three, lot zero-one-zero with the following approval conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall address comments of Paul Hudson's City Engineer in his February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four email to the city planner regarding new culvert size and location for the driveway installation. Two, a zoning permit is required prior to alteration of the site. Three, the commission waives the requirement for submission and filing of an engineered site plan due to the nature and location of the project in accordance with section eight point four point four of the zoning regulations.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions? Go ahead, Diane.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan fourteen ninety-three, applicant Torrington Historical Society, location John Brown Road, assessor map two thirteen, block zero-zero-three, lot zero-one-zero. Proposal parking lot for six cars for public access to John Brown Birthplace Trails with the following conditions. The applicant shall address comments of Paul Hudson's City Engineer in his February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four email to the city planner regarding new culvert size and location for the driveway installation. Two, a zoning permit is required prior to authorization, alter, station of the site. Three, the commission waives the requirement for submission and filing of an engineered site plan due to the nature and location of the project in accordance with section eight point four point four of the zoning regulations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Good luck.
Very much.
Thank you.
Can I, uh, just, uh, one minute? Can I say thanks?
Yeah.
Uh, especially to Jeremy and to Nate for their support in this project. We've been working up there for a long time and to the commission for your time and your effort, uh, to the city of Torrington, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Moving on to agenda, item number six, E, re-subdivision applicant Robert Bombardieri, location five zero five years, University Drive, proposals for two lot re-subdivision. We need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving on to agenda, item six, F, special exception twenty-four dash zero-two in site plan fourteen ninety-five. Applicant Leila Campo, location two thirty-two Clug Hill Road. Proposal two-day special event, six point thirteen B, public or private event intended primarily for gatherings, entertainment or amusement. We need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Get busy.
So moved.
Bring it.
Moving on to agenda, item number six, G, site plan fourteen thirty modification applicant Greenstone Investments LLC, Leila Campo, location two thirty-two Clug Hill Road. Proposal modifications to previously approved recreational vehicle park. Is the applicant in attendance?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Name and address, please.
My name is Ryan McAvoy. I'm a licensed professional engineer with SLR Consultants. Business address of ninety-nine Realty Drive in Cheshire. Um, thank you. And, uh, Leila Campo, the, uh, representative of the applicant would love to be here, but she's on a cruise, so, so I'm it's just, uh, it's me representing, uh, the changes to the site plan.
Didn't even invite us.
Yeah, I know, what a, what a slacker. Um, hope that got caught in video. Uh, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to share my screen.
Please.
Thank you. Yeah. Alright, let me know when you can see.
There it is.
Got it.
Alright, excellent. So this plan represents, um, the overall, you know, site plan. It, it looks probably substantially similar to previous iterations, but there are a number of uh, modifications and changes. I, I hope you find them to be not particularly substantive or not of a concern, but nonetheless, we do have to, uh, get permission from this commission, uh, for these modifications. So I, I'm gonna try to be brief. I'm not gonna hit on every contour that, that changed, but uh, try to focus on some of the larger points and, and if, if Jeremy, if there's something that I missed or you, you want me to expand upon it, I'd be happy to do so. But, uh, in general, um, uh, some of the, uh, more substantive changes I'd say would be the, uh, revision to what we call future phase five, which will be eventually the, uh, main office and entrance, uh, which is located, was located on the outside of this Serpentine driveway coming up the site. It was located in this area. We've relocated so it's inside the curve. Um, right now, that's, uh, a graded slope. Um, but when they do construct a new office at that location, it will have to be re-graded, uh, and detailed. Um, but we.
Sorry, Ryan, can you show that grading sheet?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Yeah. Just for that area, so they can see it there.
Again, there.
There.
Uh, yeah, okay.
That's, that's the end of it, yeah.
Okay, so, so, uh, the building, uh, located, you know, again, future phase, this is about a, uh, uh, five to one slope roughly today. Uh, this ought to be re-graded to support the building and parking area, uh, but we just refer to that as future phase five. The reason why this is now the inside of the driveway as opposed to the outside over here is we had previously shown like a placeholder location for a recreational pond on the property, uh, in this vicinity over here. Um, the applicants decided to construct a little bit further to the west and these contours represent the interim sort of construction condition of this, um, of this pond. Uh, it's, it's not quite complete, but it's mostly complete. Um, so this is sort of a flip-flop of the building and parking for phase five, again, to be detailed more in the future, uh, when the applicants are in a financial position to, uh, construct these improvements. Uh, so that's.
Alright, one of the notes I had, Ryan, um, was to try to see if you could gauge what the, the acre number was for, for the, for the pond itself when it's, when it's full, when it's got water in it. Do you have, do you have any idea?
Uh, acre, acreage of, I'm sorry.
Of like, basically the size of the pond, yeah.
Oh, this, this, these contours rep- roughly represent the extent of the, of the pond. It's been excavated. It just hasn't been landscaped. It hasn't been topsoiled. Uh, there's an intent to bring some, um, some sand in to have a sort of a, I guess a quasi beach. Um, you know, this is, uh, this was, um, you know, something that didn't encounter groundwater. They're actually pumping in water from, uh, the well on site to fill this up and they expect that they're gonna be, um, having to continue to do that from time to time to, uh, to top it off. Uh, but in terms of the volume, I, I, I could, I could make a guess, Jeremy, but I, um, I'd have to, I'd have to give you a more formal one.
I just had that, when I was finalizing things, I had, I kind of had that in, bouncing around in my head that we, we should get a kind of a general, like, uh, like surface acreage, number for how big the pond is, just for our, for the record.
Uh, I've scaled off my plans on the floor here. It's approximately one hundred and sixty by two hundred. Um, and it's triangular in shape, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut that in half. So one sixty times two hundred divided by two roughly, about sixteen thousand square feet, thereabouts, so.
And so about a half an acre?
Oh, a little shy of that. Third of an acre, third of an acre, yeah.
I mean, that just gives us a ballpark of the size.
Yeah, if we ever, if we ever need, if we ever need the number, um, I can, I can just take it off the, the plans if I have, if I have CAD available. Um, any other questions about this area? I can, should I proceed to other, other parts of the site?
Parking for the building, that's strictly what? Just cars? Obviously, there's no camper parking or anything right there.
No, no, occasionally people come in with, with, uh, vehicles that they need to, you know, you have a, a, a trailer, a trailed, uh, vehicle. If they need to go to the office and park there, there's just a spot for a few employees and, and, you know, half a dozen potential.
Um, so if somebody came in there with an RV, can they park adjacent to this building or that's frowned upon?
What, what, what will happen? This, this driveway shown here represents the, the, the present, uh, what's being sought at the moment in terms of the draft, because all the RVs are gonna enter the property, continue past this location into their, uh, what, what we're calling their temporary office, which is further into the site. When this gets built out, you can see sort of underneath, in gray, we have, um, uh, a, a rotary and, and loading areas for RVs to come in and queue up. Um, so they'll, they'll, it'll be much more substantial when this office gets built, but until then, uh, there's no intention of having RVs stack up here because there's no one to greet them. There's no, uh, there's no.
Thank you.
Got it.
This is merely to show, you know, the intent for what, what, what the applicant seeks to do, hopefully a year, two, maybe three years down the road, whenever they, uh, whenever this thing starts generating the kind of, the kind of money they hope it does.
Hmm.
So, um, I'm gonna go back to the index plan just to kind of touch upon some of the other modifications. Kind of easiest to start there. Okay. So the temporary office, again, you enter the site, go past where the future office is gonna be, up the hill, pass the, uh, the house that's there today, uh, towards the office area, which is right here. So a few minor changes around this office area include, uh, uh, identification on, on one of the more detailed sheets about, uh, golf cart rental storage. So golf carts will be stored here on the west side of the building. Uh, we include a wraparound porch on this structure that was not part of a, part of previous plans. Uh, this wraparound porch, uh, requires to slide the parking spaces a little bit further away from the building. Again, we're talking about five to ten feet, nothing hopefully too concerning there. Um, one of the other outbuildings, uh, former, former farm buildings that will be used again for, for the, the campground will include a playground shown here, outlined in a dash line. Um, dumpster relocation, the dumpster was originally closer to the office building. We've relocated it closer to the house on site. Um, again, it's accessible for all the residents and, uh, we've ensured that this can be, you know, reached by a front-end loader, um, dump truck. Uh, not dump truck, uh, garbage truck, rather. In terms of, uh, the site, the campsites themselves, there's no change in the number of sites, but we did reorganize them a little bit. Uh, you may recall that this area here had a central road. Um, seemed rather redundant and costly to the applicant, so we had these two one-way roads. So we simply flip-flopped where these sites accessed and, and are keeping these two one-way streets in place. Similarly, in the northwest corner, there was a, 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 a small road cutting through here. We, uh, simply flip-flopped the sites and have them all access around the, the outer edge of this circle. Um, minor modification to this road here. Minor modification to this road here. Again, no change in the number of sites, just, uh, just tweaking the access somewhat. Um, there is no change to stormwater, no change to septic systems. Um, no change to, uh, fundamental access around the property. Um, we did clarify, getting back to where I was talking earlier. We did clarify some of the site grading that's occurring around this pond, outside of the pond. Um, namely some of the excavation that occurred around the south and west side. Um, and I, I'd say that's, that's a summary of the major changes. Um, one item that was a condition of approval from previous applications was that either the parcel needed to be con- consolidated into one, it's presently two parcels today, or the lot lines needed to be adjusted so that all the proposed improvements all on one lot. Uh, as part of our package that we submitted, we include a lot lender vision, taking a lot line that right now splits roughly through the center of the site and shifting it so that it's over here. Two lots will continue to be, uh, on the property, uh, both conforming to. uh on the property, uh both conforming to zoning, although adjusted to the point now where where all the improvements will fall on one property. Um, and I guess um unless there's any questions or Jeremy, if there's anything you want me to think I should focus on as part of this uh discussion, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions from the commission.
I have a question. The um this campground originally was a K O A, I believe. And I've heard that's changed.
I I'm not
Had liberty to say anything?
I I really, I I I don't know what relationship that the applicant will have with K O A moving forward. I know that was something that they were debating internally for a variety of reasons. But um I don't I don't know if it's going to continue to be a K O A or not.
So any of these changes and so forth aren't kind of related to any relationship. You know, requirement sizes and so forth.
No, not exactly. A lot of it was just um
Little housekeeping here.
Housekeeping changes in opinion as the site progressed. Um, you know, trying to find ways to cut some costs in in some circumstances. Um, you know, just the kind of the the life cycle of a project of this size.
Right.
Any commissioners have any questions before Jeremy goes to his memo?
Pretty straightforward.
All right, thank you. Uh, Lila Campo has filed an application to modify previously previously approved site plan number fourteen thirty. The application requests the following modifications to the previously approved plans. One, position and grading for a recreational pond on the southern and and that should say end of the project area in project phase one. Uh, two grading changes between the existing house on the property south to the new pond area in phase one. Three, minor additional revisions to grading and road site layout across the project site, and four, project title change. A special exception and site plan approval was granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission for this project on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, with plans revised through February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Previous modifications were approved on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to realign driveways and check-in building and add a pond near the check-in building. No new use changes for the property are proposed as part of this application. No public hearing was required for this app, this modif- for this modification proposal to the previously approved site plan. The review of this modification application is guided by the RV Park Regulations in section six point seven point three of the zoning regulations, as well as site plan requirements of section eight point four. A set of plans has been submitted titled Sky Ridge Trails Campground, two, three, two, Clug Hill Road, Torington, Connecticut, regulatory submission by S L R Cheshire, Connecticut, dated November nine nineteen twen- uh nineteen twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, last revised to March sixth, twenty twenty-four, thirty sheets. Also submitted is a separate truck turning movement sheet for the modified driveway dated August fourth, twenty twenty-three, and an updated report titled Clug Hill RV RV Park Drainage Report revised to March sixth, twenty twenty-four. Staff has been in regular communication with the property owner and engineer to discuss these revisions prior to this meeting. Other items of note. One, I recommend that all conditions of the original approval under site plan number fourteen thirty and modifications of April twenty twenty-three and August twenty twenty-three for the site remain in place, except as otherwise noted in this memo. Two, final plans and Mylar sheets are required to be filed in accordance with the original approval prior to work occurring on the property. Three, zoning and grading permits are required to be obtained or modified prior to work in each individual phase on the property in accordance with the original approval and modifications after filing of Mylar sheets with the city clerk. Four, the applicant should provide the area of the proposed pond for the application record. Other staff comments. All staff comments and requirements from previous approvals and modifications remain in effect, except those noted below. Economic development. This modification was not referred to the Economic Development Office. Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the City Planner dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, offered the following comments on this application. General, I cannot find the construction access road anywhere on the plan. If the road will be completely closed with no public or campground staff use after the project completion, you just need to add it to the existing condition sheets. If there is a planned use after project completion, it must be added to the grading and sediment erosion control sheets. If it is only for campground staff use, then I recommend signage or a gate be installed to deter public access. In any case, the road location can be estimated using aerial photos. The tree line shall be updated on the final sign plan set to reflect the final conditions on the site. Wetlands. There are regulated wetlands and watercourses within the subject property that require wetlands review for this proposal. The applicant submitted a wetland permit application to address prior permit violations on two nine twenty-four, permit W C twenty-four oh two oh one, and were awarded a permit during the regularly scheduled inland wetlands commission meeting on three twelve twenty-four. Also, sheet double L three shows the approximate area of the newly constructed pond and future beach. Because the beach was not approved in the above described wetlands permit, I recommend removing the beach from the plan and applying for a separate wetlands permit for the work at a later date. If the beach is removed from the plans, this constitutes a favorable report to the commission. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the A R C for comment. Torington Area Health District. An approval letter for the modifications was submitted for the file from Justin Romprey, T A H D Sanitarian, dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Engineering, in an email to the City Planner dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, Paul Cunson, City Engineer, stated that he has no comments on the proposed modifications. Police Traffic. Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, in an email to the City Planner dated March ninth, twenty twenty-four, indicated that he has no comments on the modification. Fire. No comments were received from Fire Marshal Edward Becetta. Comments from the original approval regarding cisterns and dry hydrant locations on final plans are still in effect. W P C A, Cheryl Lewis, W P C A Administrative Assistant, in an email to the City Planner dated March eighth, twenty twenty-four, indicated that W P C A has no comments on these proposed revisions. Building Department. No comments were received from Building Official Kevin Gillette for this modification. Comments from the original approval regarding building permit requirements are still in effect. Conclusion. Per review and comment by city staff, I recommend approval of this revision to approve site plan number fourteen thirty, two, three, two, Clug Hill Road, and tax assessor map, two, one, five, block zero, zero, three, lot zero, zero, four, for a proposed recreational vehicle park and associated property improvements with the following approval conditions and recommendations. All conditions stated in the initial approval of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and modifications approved April nineteen, twenty twenty-three, and August sixteen, twenty twenty-three remain in effect, except noted below. One, per comments by assistants Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the final site plan for filing shall, one, eliminate the beach area near the pond pending future wetlands approval. Two, include the location and grades of construction access maintenance driveway, including access gating and signage. And three, update the tree line on the plans to reflect conditions on the site. Two, the applicant shall add a note on the area of the pond on the final plan set. Three, each phase shall be completed in its entirety prior to opening for operation. Four, revisions to existing zoning and grading permits are required prior to alteration of use of the site for the modified areas, with the exception of those activities previously authorized under existing zoning and grading permits outside of the modified areas. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. Uh, B, one Mylar copy of each site plan sheet I N G R one and G R two and G R three for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of modified zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do any commissioners have any questions? All right. Go ahead, Di.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan fourteen thirty modification. Uh applicant Greenstone Investments LLC, Lila Campo. Location is two thirty-two Clug Hill Road. Proposal modifications to previously approved recreational vehicle park with the following approval conditions and recommendations. All condi- all conditions stated in the initial approval of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and modifications approved April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three remain in effect, except as noted below. One, per comments by the assistant Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, the final plan set for filing shall, one, eliminate the beach area near the pond on the plans pending future wetlands approval. Two, include the location and grades of construction access maintenance uh driveway, including a provision for access gating and signage. And three, update the tree line on the plans to reflect conditions on site. Two, the applicant shall add a note on the area of the pond to the final plan set. Three, each phase shall be completed in its entirety prior to opening for operation. Four, revisions to existing zoning and grading permits are required prior to alteration or use of the site for the modified areas, with the exception of those activities previously authorized under existing zoning and grading permits outside of the modified areas. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the fully approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Myla- Mylar copy of each site plan sheet I N G R dash one and G R dash two and G R dash three for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheets shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar she- sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of modified zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
A motion. Do I have a second?
I
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So moved. Good luck.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Ryan.
Moving on to John, we're shifting back to agenda item number six, A, Old Business, A, Discussion Shelter Regulations.
So I I uh put together a rough draft of a first, kind of a first look at this. Um, this is kind of a uh amalgamation, I guess you would call it, of uh some other some other Connecticut communities' regulations, plus some um uh I guess, I I wouldn't, they're they're kind of like suggested regulations from a couple of different states that have really been tackling the the issues of of shelters, both temporary and and permanent. Um, so if I just walk through them quickly, I I believe everybody got a copy, right? They were sent out. Okay. Um, the first piece is the is the clarification that group care facilities, we've always interpreted it this way, but that permanent shelters uh all under the group care facility um definition. And I just wanted to make sure it's clear, so I just added uh, you know, that right now it says unrelated individuals who are handicapped, aged, disabled, in need of supervision, undergoing rehabilitation, and I added the statement, or otherwise unhoused, just to clarify that it meets the, you know, it 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 uh the the permanent ones fall under group care facilities. And then I added a definition um on the next page for temporary for temporary or transient shelters.
Hmm.
Um, this again was kind of like a a mashup of a of a few different definitions that I saw that kind of meets
Yeah.
what we've discussed already. Um, there's the next page is the table that uh allows temporary shelters in every zone except the single-family zones, the industrial zones, and the watershed protection zones.
Hmm.
Um, I left watershed protection out um only because it's uh more of a more of a public health issue with trying to do septic systems for for, you know, areas that really aren't designed for it.
Hmm.
Uh, so we can have that discussion, you know, you know, later, but that my suggestion right now is to leave it out of R W P. Um, all all by special exception in the zones that are allowed. And then on the final page, uh I took a crack at guy, you know, specific guidelines. We we are, we already are going to follow the special exception guidelines, but these are specific guidelines. Um, you know, temporary shelters in those zones by special exception approval. Um, not located within five hundred feet of any school park or other shelter facility. Um, most of the other communities that I saw or other suggested state, you know, language from other states had like a thousand foot, fifteen hundred foot. I'm I'm putting five hundred feet in as a starting point for us. And when we go to public hearing or, you know, continue our discussion, we can
Hmm.
you know, keep that or talk about talk about changing it. Um, uh, the the types of of uh organizations that can that can run the facilities um are outlined there. Um, so we we really had this question on on number of beds. And this is kind of a standard. Uh, I I think this is, this is taken, I I think this is taken out of some sort of uh national, like, shelter standard, but I got this out of out of uh actual zoning, like, um I keep trying to think of the term, model regulations for for shelters. Fifty square feet of gross floor area, one person for each fifty square feet, not to exceed fifty residents. Um, facility staff staffing at all times, uh one toilet for every fifteen shelter beds. We had, we had had that discussion of of how many bathrooms were available. Um, operations plan, which I can see I need to do a spell check. Um, opening and closing time each year, number of beds, uh screening processes, if if any, security plan. And then any other, I mean, I put this catch-all phrase of any other application or any other information we we deem necessary or specific application. That's sort of mirrored in the uh in the special exception language anyway. So this is just a starting point. Um, uh tar- target-wise, I think what I'm what I'd like to do is take one more meeting to to go over this, and so anyone can can talk directly to me in the meantime, if they suggest any changes or have any concerns. Um, then maybe in April, we can schedule a hearing for June because we have to be two months out. So one of one of, we have two June meetings, so one of our June meetings. So
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Any commissioners have any questions, Jeremy?
Yeah, and like I said, once we, once everybody really gets time to look at it, I can have one-on-one conversations if anyone wants to give me a call in the meantime.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item number seven, Correspondence, A, Zoning and Blight Violation Update.
Everybody got a copy unless someone wants to everyone, anyone wants to discuss anything individually? Any? Um, otherwise, everybody has a copy.
Hmm.
Uh, there was, there's just one other thing I wanted to mention that's not on the agenda. There is a training session that Z B A is doing on April twenty-second on the roles and responsibilities of Z B As. So if anyone wants to get another half hour in in training, that's a that's going to be, it's going to be in the room, but the I believe the presenter is going to be remote. And it's the same presenter that does the one for the Bar Association, the the Z B A part of the Bar Association. So they're just basically giving that talk.
Hmm.
And that would go towards?
The training hours, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. We all got an hour last month, so or you all got an hour last month. It's a last or last meeting, so.
It's four hours, that's
Four hours total, but you, that second February meeting we had met that one hour of
Yeah.
affordable and fair housing training.
I had met all mine.
So you got the, what's that?
I had already met all my requirements.
It reset on January first.
Right.
It's it's over a two-year period now, though, so you don't have to be in a rush. I I just wanted to let people know that it's going on on the twenty-second.
All righty. All right, the time is nine thirty-one. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Adjournment.
Make a motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So moved, have a good evening, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.